Severe weather can strike anytime, anywhere, but there's a simple way to stay safe. Hey, Jim Cantori here. I stay safe in dangerous weather by planning ahead. You can stay safe too with a few easy steps. Build an inexpensive kit with supplies for your family's needs. Write down important information like phone numbers and medications. Always talk with your family and remember any pets in your planning. Be ready, be safe. Start your plan today at ready.gov/plan.
STEM is precise, no margin for error.
Dare to forget that. Dare to have fun with it. Get weird with it. Dare to send those old STEM theories flying past the neighbor's house into outer space. Dare to program something internet-breaking, record-breaking. Dare to blow their minds. Dare to learn the difference between sedimentary and metamorphic rock. Go find those rocks. Dare to keep daring. Dare to STEM. Check out She Can STEM to get started.
It's 6:00 PM and we'll begin the meeting for School District 882 on Monday, May 16th. Please stand for the Fudge of Legion.
To the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, petition under God indivisible, with freedom and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda has been sent out. Discussion questions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Candace to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes 6-0. No citizens comments tonight, so we'll move forward with the student representatives. Welcome again. Is this our last time or do we have another one after this?
I believe we have one more.
Right. This is good.
So, one final time, I'm Emily Sukhina Mohammed.
I'm Natalie Emmerich.
We don't really have anything to say other than to give our thanks to the school board and Mr. Cole and Ms. Hanson for giving us this wonderful opportunity to speak in front of you all for this full year.
Yeah, it's just been a super cool experience seeing kind of what happens behind the scenes. So, we're super thankful for this opportunity to kind of be the voice for all students.
Right, and I'm so glad these are archived. I'll look at these 20 years later. Thank you so much. That's all we had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you've done a great job. Moving on to fiscal stability. The consent agenda was sent out earlier. Any questions or discussion? Not, we need a motion for an action.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes 6-0. Onto collaborative connections.
Superintendent. All right, we have such a supportive community and here's an example. We have two people coming forward with some donations. And the first one is Meili Vasoli. $800 designated for the boys' swimming team. And then also the Monticello Lions Club with $600 going for the Monticello High School choir robes. So, there hardly is ever a board meeting where we don't have somebody from the community wanting to connect with us and make sure that we hear their support. So, we appreciate it so much. Thank you, Monticello community, especially the two donations here.
Standing. This is an action item. I think we have a resolution on these.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Monticello School Board #882 to gratefully accept the following donations: From Meili Vasoli, $800 for the boys' swimming team. And from Monticello Lions Club, $600 for Monticello High School choir robes.
Motion made by Jennifer with a resolution stating donations from Meili Vasoli for $800 for the boys' swimming team and the Monticello Lions Club. $600 for the MHS choir robes. And a second by Candace. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes 6-0. Next, we have teaching and learning. Principals Colwell and Hanson are here too for an exciting event. Parents and students that have arrived here for this event, please do not feel obligated to stay for the rest of the meeting unless you have nothing else to do tonight, you could say. We'll give you a little opportunity if you want, after the pictures and everything, that you can go enjoy your evening outside if you'd like. So, all yours.
Thank you. Thank you for letting the three of us stand here. As you can see, we have a very full board and this is just a small representation of all of the students and the great things that are happening at Monticello High School. We are very proud and pleased to just share not only the things that are happening academically, but also the impact that you can see Natalie and Sukhina have had, but all of these students have had throughout the entire year. The three of us are each going to share with you and introduce a small segment of what some of these students are being recognized for and how they are impacting our building.
Hey, I'm Gary Revnik. I'm the Activities Director. I get to go first here. It's a privilege to recognize some of our outstanding students tonight. The first one I'm going to give out here or share is the Excel Award. It goes to a junior in the high school. They have to have a high GPA. They participate in High School League Fine Arts and Athletics. They have to hold leadership positions in the school district, volunteer in their community, and meet eligibility requirements from the High School League. Our male recipient this year is Thor Lemke. Thor has a 4.0 GPA. Participates in, and Thor, I might miss something here, but he participates in football, hockey, golf, first robotics, math team, musical. He's our tech team captain. He's a state participant on our math team. First time we've had one in about 10 years. Outstanding. Band, jazz band, wind ensemble, media productions, student council, and then some of his volunteering. He's done peer tutoring. He volunteers at church. He helps with technology with staff and students. And he's helped with hockey and baseball, youth camps, and different tryouts for those sports. So, Thor Lemke, let's give him a round of applause. We'll get you up in a second. And then Atira Gross is our female, 4.0 GPA. She participated in soccer, our musical. She's in a cappella choir. She participated one year in track. She's in stand-up. She volunteers at her church. She does Meals on Wheels at the nursing home. She plays the piano. And she stood out with all of her volunteering in our community and at her school. Atira Gross, let's give her a round of applause. All right, students, if you're here, come on up, please. All right, we've got Thor. I'm gonna do a picture.
Yeah, all right.
Actually, Matt Lurie, if you don't mind, when you're announcing their names, the kids could come forward. So, we'll give them a little more spotlight.
Yeah, I don't know who they are when I'm looking.
So, we will call you up here as we reach these categories. So, Thor, I need you to come on up here. Gracie, come on up. So, I am introducing an award called, it's two people that we're sponsoring along with American Legion that we're sending to the Boys and Girls State. So, Gracie Rubenek and Thor Lemke are both juniors. And they were nominated by the Social Studies Department because of their interest in the way that they handled their history classes and learning and showing a lot of interest in government in particular. Boys and Girls State is an American Legion-sponsored program where for a full week this summer, June 12 to 18, they will be going down to Bethel. Gracie's going to Bethel and Thor's going to St. John's, I believe, to participate in a week-long experience where they learn about citizenship and government. And there are mock trials. There are mock interviews. There's a number of political speakers that come, some elections. There's a governor that's voted in from the student section along with a number of state representative kind of positions. And they will kind of just go through that whole constitutional process for that full week at Bethel and St. John's along with 200 other delegates or students from area schools throughout the state of Minnesota, and small schools, big schools, they'll all be there. So, because of their performance and history, their teachers nominated these two people to develop and kind of interactively learn about civic process. So, we can thank the American Legion. They're paying for the whole thing. And it's a very generous offer to make for us. All we have to do is find the students and these two rose to the top. We're excited to nominate these two. Let's give them a round of applause.
As they're transitioning, can I have Wilson Dahlheimer, Mary Cruiser, Natalie Emmerich, and Brandon Gers come on up here? These four students were just honored recently at a banquet for our Students of Excellence from Monticello High School. These are students who have achieved a commendable GPA or have demonstrated a combination of academic achievement, leadership skills, and school and community involvement. These four are exemplary and positive role models to fellow students and staff around the building. They make a difference every day in the lives of our fellow students, staff, and our community at large. They represent the best of the best at Monticello High School. Wilson Dahlheimer, Mary Cruiser, Natalie Emmerich, and Brandon Gers.
Okay, Quinn McCullough, Lucy Schaefer, come on up, please. All right, the next award I'm going to talk about here is the Minnesota State High School League. It's a AAA award. This award goes to seniors. They need to represent excellence in academics, the arts, and athletics. Criteria, you need to be a senior. You have to have a high GPA. Need to participate in High School League activities. And you need to meet all eligibility requirements by the High School League. Our male recipient this year is Quinn McCullough. He's a 4.0 GPA student here at the high school. He's a participant in cross-country wrestling and track. Six years varsity wrestling. He's all-conference in wrestling. He has over 100 wins for a wrestling team. Impressive thing. Three sport captain. All three second-place participants in the state cross-country. Our team took second this year. Very proud of the team this fall. He's currently on our track team and they haven't had sections yet. And he's academic all-conference in all three sports that he played, obviously, that high GPA. And then in the high school, he was involved in a lot of our arts classes, the ceramics and woodworking. Let's give Quinn McCullough a round of applause. Our female is Lucy Schaefer, 4.0 GPA as well. It was really easy for me to calculate GPAs today for my four. So, I appreciate that. She's in band and she's on our wind ensemble, our top band, and pep band. She played soccer. She was all-conference and she was our captain this fall in soccer and did an outstanding job. She's a member of our dance team for four years. She also earned all-state honors as a dancer. And she also participated in track for a couple of years. Lucy Schaefer, congratulations.
I'd like to introduce the 2022 valedictorians for the senior class. If these 12 students could come on up to the front. Emily Al-Mohammed, Mary Cruiser, Rose Curtis, Larissa Forresty, Sanders Hansen, Wyatt Cattlebach, Emily Lovgren, Quinn McCullough, Lucy Schaefer, Madison Schwartz, Haley Thorne, and Nathaniel Thovson. These are students who have maintained 4.0 GPA throughout their entire high school career. And these 12 students will have a part in our graduation ceremony at the end of the school year. Can I introduce you to our 2022 valedictorians?
I love so much that we're back to normal.
Now.
I love celebrating the kids. Makes me cry. I'm not even their mom. A hard, cuddly. It's so good to see the kids.
So, Clay, that was 12 of our finest seniors. We've got 15 coming at you soon of our finest juniors. So, this last group that I'll introduce is our junior honor guard. And part of their role will be to participate in helping us facilitate graduation, helping kind of direct traffic, see what it's about, and just be a part of the whole ceremony there in a very helpful way. So, I'll call these names up here. And if you would, please come on up right away. Sidney Brant, Eleanor Cummings, Elise Erickson, Atira Gross, Sophia Hossi, Thor Lemke, Evelyn Morehouse, Haley Prater, Elizabeth Siegler, Tristan Samard, Jason Smith, Haley Stegora, Rocco Vasoli, Mackenzie Whipper, and Brooke Ilitallo. So, again, this is our junior honor guard. All of them have maintained a 4.0 GPA up until this point in their career, high school career. Just like the valedictorians, they put more pressure on themselves than many adults do. So, one word of advice is if it doesn't work out for your senior year, that's okay. They're still amazing people. You know, when we look through the classes, to include the valedictorians, they are not taking a light caseload. I was just looking through the juniors' courses and kind of pulling up each of their schedules today. And you see classes such as Philharmonic Orchestra and Student Council. Those are kind of activities along with sports and things. But AP Bio, AP Calc, CIS Business and Marketing, CIS History, Chemistry, Zoology, Physics, CIS Communication, Astronomy, CIS A cappella choir, and CIS Psychology are all courses you guys are taking right now. And that's not easy. So, we appreciate you and are impressed by you. And I'd like to welcome and please help me welcome our junior honor guard.
Awesome. I'm just gonna say a few words and if anybody else on the board wants to contribute, you obviously can. Everybody knows about the challenges we've had the last couple of years. And for these students to continue to do what they do in the adversity and challenges that they face through very extreme and unusual conditions and circumstances, it's just truly an honor and a blessing that you're part of our district. And parents, they obviously didn't get there without you being there to support them. And so, parents, you should be very proud because you have special kids that are doing great things right now. And when you have them stand up here, it makes you feel really good about where the district's at and the places you're going. Because sometimes we forget to celebrate all these great things that the kids do. And there are a lot of good things that our kids are doing right now. And we kind of lose sight of that and some of the craziness. So, thank you, juniors and seniors, for everything you've done in making this a better place. And we're excited to see the things that you're going to move forward and go on within life. So, thank you very much. So, did anybody else want to contribute or?
I just want to encourage you guys. You're setting a precedence for the rest of your life. So, I want to encourage you to continue to do this in all areas of your life, in college, in your careers, be involved in your communities, give back, and then you'll be rewarded for that as well.
Awesome. You can leave now if you'd like. Juniors, it will not affect your GPA. We're not taking attendance.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
I promise it won't be much longer.
Should've had you do the speech. Yeah, but he's comically really. He brought the whole house down.
You're devoted.
Eric, mine are stuck here. They rode with me. I'm getting glares.
Sit out in the sunshine.
Lots of things we can talk about.
I can't believe my mom called us. You'll hear about it later.
Okay, we'll move ahead with Curriculum Advisory Committee Bylaws presented by Cindy.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. We're seeking final approval of the Curriculum Advisory Committee Bylaws. So, as you know, the Curriculum Advisory Committee, otherwise known as CAC, if you ever hear people say CAC, that's what we're talking about, has undergone some major changes in its membership starting in January. This process for selection of committee members was aligned with state statute. And it was led by you, the school board, and Eric Olson and myself. As part of the reorganization process of the district's CAC bylaws, they were developed to outline our philosophy, our purpose, our responsibilities, our membership details, meeting procedures, and methods on how we might change bylaws in the future. In addition, the bylaws outline the expectations of our committee members and some of the required content that we would cover throughout the year. Just some of the required content. We add additional content and beyond that. After the first draft was developed, we brought it to the board's subcommittees for review. We took your feedback. We went back, made some changes to it. And then after that, we brought the bylaws to the CAC committee for feedback and review. And then at the last meeting, I brought it back to them for final approval. So, now we're circling back to you to say that we would like to get final approval of the CAC bylaws and that this is an action item so that we would need to get it from. the CAC bylaws, and that this is an action item, so that we would need to get it from
There. Can you bring those up real quick?
Yep. You want to click on that? There you go.
I was just kind of going through these the other day, and I don't know, I probably should have looked at it closer before we had committee. But if you can scroll down, I just wanted to throw something out there.
Sure.
Right there. Oops, stop, go up. We're talking about providing feedback recommendations for district improvement, areas addressed by meeting agendas. You know, we changed the way that people can provide citizens' comments now, like they have a process. Do we have a process for that, that they can provide feedback, or do you think we could probably implement some, a process to help that?
Yeah, we did talk about that. We should, we were, we want to add a link on our website where people can provide feedback. My question would be, would we want that just to be on the front page, or would we want that to be after we have meeting minutes and then a link to provide feedback to the minutes? Or do you think it should be ahead of time, before the meeting? Or both?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
So should we get feedback on what we want to discuss at the meeting, so prior to the meeting, and things they want to hear about? Or should we get feedback once we post the minutes, and they can give feedback on the minutes from the previous meeting?
So...
On content prior, or what we discussed afterwards, or both?
I do feel like we need to have a conversation on what that process will look like. So that way, it's really clear for the committee as well on how that goes about.
And in fact, it may be beneficial to have it both places.
Right.
Because things do come up. A clear process of how to add something to an upcoming agenda. Now, we meet four times a year, so there's kind of a long period of time between the meetings. So it'd be very beneficial to have a well-defined process like we do for citizens' comments to add items to the agenda. I think there's also a few areas, as we looked at it some more, that could probably benefit from some better definitions.
Okay. In the bylaws portion?
In the bylaws portion. It's not to take away from any of the hard work that's been done, but one of the things that we looked at is, we're not time-sensitive on this. We could maybe think about working on it a little bit more and then bringing it back around again. So does anybody else have any...
Do that?
If, if we provide a link to provide feedback or want to have an agenda item speak at the CAC, is it something that we would include in the actual bylaws, or is it just something we would move forward? Do we, maybe it should be in the bylaws, because then if somebody's looking at the bylaws, they understand, they read that part, then they understand that there isn't like...
Yeah, because there are meeting procedures in here, and that would have to be included, I think, in the meeting procedures. So yeah, I do think it should be part of the bylaws. So we could bring it back to a subcommittee, talk about it, and add more items like you're talking about, and then bring it back for final approval, maybe in June.
And I think we have one more CAC meeting yet this year, too. So that's been a very enthusiastic group. And I think to Cindy's credit, I think we had over 55 people beyond that committee. So we have a very enthusiastic group of folks that really want to have some good conversations. It would be good to bring that back.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We can bring that up on Wednesday, actually.
When is your next CAC meeting?
This Wednesday.
Coming?
No, it's next one.
Next Wednesday?
It's the 18th.
Twenty-fifth.
I think it's the 18th.
That doesn't leave much time for them to review it again.
The CAC committee can go back through it and make some suggestions and then bring it back to the policy committee.
That'll be awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Maybe just to table it.
Yeah, let's table it and bring it back.
Motion just to table the Curriculum Advisor Committee bylaws.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Candace, seconded by Kathy, to table the CAC committee bylaws. So they can look at it in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
The motion passes six-zero. Awesome. Thank you. Tina?
All right, tonight, we are looking at meal prices for our food service program for the next school year. There is a federal law under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of 2010 that Obama kind of helped lead, where it looks at the prices that paid students pay versus the rate that is reimbursed for students that are eligible for free and reduced meals. So as an example, for this school year, the federal rate that we receive for free lunches, assuming, you know, meals weren't free, that we would have gotten $3.73 per meal, and a paid-status lunch, we would have received $41. So that difference is $3.32. So in essence, what a paid-status meal should cost is about that much. And so for this school year, you know, if kids paid that weren't eligible, or families paid, it'd be $2.90 for elementary lunches and $3.05 for secondary lunches. And, you know, traditionally, we have raised 10 cents, even though, like last year, we raised 10 cents, even though we knew meals were free. Next year, we don't know the status, so we're assuming that families will have to pay for meals, and that meals will not be free if they're not eligible for free and reduced meal benefits. So because of our fund balance and kind of where we're sitting, the Budget Committee recommended increasing our meals by five cents for breakfast and lunch for the elementary and secondary students, but for the adult meal prices, to raise them to the minimum that's required under MDE with the summer food service program. So we're meeting that minimum threshold. So for elementary and secondary breakfast, that would go from $1.70 to $1.75. Adult, $2.50 to $2.65 for breakfast. At lunch, elementary, going from $2.90 to $2.95. Secondary, $3.05 to $3.10. An adult, $4.35 to $4.60. And then if students need milk for either cold lunch or just wanted extra milk, no change, and that's still staying at 65 cents. Because another thing to consider is that the meal cost should cover the cost of the food. So for contracts where, you know, they didn't have to go through the bid process, the inflation rate that's being recognized is 7%. So there is some inflation happening with food costs, so we're trying to balance that as well. But for next year, these were the rates proposed for the budget, by the Budget Committee, to move forward next year. Another comment is that is, they are in line with our neighbors, so they're not out of whack. They're very similar.
Remind me, beef pre-cold and...
We raised them last year. So we raised them each year to kind of keep in line with the cost of food.
Remember, we had discussion about that, because if we, it would look like we had a really big jump all at once.
Any discussion?
You know, that 7%? What approximately, what was the date on that? Was that within the last couple of months? Was it a year ago, the 7%?
I believe they look at the December rates for CPI, and that's what they use for the contracts going into the next school year.
Essentially, the information from last year.
I make a motion to approve the meal prices for 2022-2023 school year.
Seconded.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jamie to approve the meal prices. Favor, signify, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. One more, Tina?
Yep. So our next item is our food service contract management recommendation. In January, we started the request for proposals for our food service vendor. We had a mandatory onsite pre-bid meeting on March 8th, so that any vendors that wanted to participate, they had to be there to take a tour of our kitchens to understand our operations a little more deeply. We had six companies attend that meeting: Chartwells, Done Right Food, K12 by Elian, SFE, Sedexo, and Taher. From there, the proposals were due to the district on March 31st, and only four of the vendors that came to that meeting submitted proposals: Sedexo, Chartwells, SFE, and Taher. We had Eric Olson, Clay Norman, Suzie Tracy, a head cook, Jamie Seeben, and myself that reviewed, evaluated, and scored each of the proposals. There was a matrix that was part of the RFP process that had to be approved by MDE before that process could continue. So some of the main factors in that point matrix were manager candidate, employee training, nutrition education, and plans to increase participation. Price had to be the category that was assigned the most points. That's one of the main requirements by MDE. So all that was considered through that process. At the end, Chartwells scored the most points, so the committee is recommending to the full board to select Chartwells as our food service vendor. The results also has to be sent to MDE for their final approval. So that's just one kind of disclaimer out there in case something should pop up. I know Lori McMahon's here, and I can't thank her enough for the last couple of months of her stepping in when we had a food service director opening. It's been hard during this transition time in a pandemic, and so she's just put her heart and all into it, and I'm sad to see her go, but hopefully the door will still be open. It's not, you know, once the year's done, you know, my door is always open, my phone, so hopefully we'll still be in touch. So that was like the hardest part, but this is how it happened.
I just have to echo that, too. I've got an opportunity to work with Lori very closely, you know, for several years, but especially the last few months, and I've never seen somebody with more integrity and a bigger heart and just an unbelievable perseverance. So thank you so much.
Any questions from Tina? Awesome, this is also an action item.
I move we approve the food services contract as presented.
Second.
Motion presented by Jennifer, seconded by Hannah, two-seven. Food services contract as presented by Tina, favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May, motion six-zero.
Thank you.
Olson, last...
All right, so we do have a couple of policies coming forward here tonight. This is policy 422 and 523 for first reading. Both policies come to us from MSBA, and they are an opportunity to provide clarification around existing policies. These policies that we're bringing forward outline what other policies apply when it's to both students and to staff. And so the Policy Committee has had an opportunity to work through policies with MSBA, with amended changes, and all board members have had the opportunity to review these policies in your electronic board packet. Are there any questions at this time for the Policy Committee to consider or any of our admin to look into further? Great, great. Then I think we'll move policies to the next step, which is obviously second reading. Thank you to the Policy Committee for your hard work on this. If members haven't had a chance to look at any of the policies in depth, please continue to do so and reach out with questions prior to the next school board meeting. Thanks, everyone.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying aye. Motion passes six-zero. School board meeting conclusion at 6:37 Monday.